From you and you alone, and I pray that you'll help us to rejoice in this day. Help us, Father, to use the day to praise you and, Father, that we might realize that every good gift and every perfect gift comes from our heavenly Father. I do pray, Father, that you will be with this meeting this morning. I pray that you will be with our county commissioners. Father, I pray that you'll give them the wisdom and the discernment that they need. And, Father, more than anything, I pray, dear Lord, that you'll give them a heart of compassion, that as they deal with others, and I know, Father, at times that they deal with some very difficult individuals, but I pray that you'll give them a heart of compassion, Father, for others and those that are hurting, that you'll just watch over and bless them. I thank you, Father, for their dedication to our county. Father, I thank you for our county. It's such a wonderful place to live. And, Father, I just pray that you would bless us and that you would guide us as a county. I pray that you'd watch over and protect us, because we realize, dear Lord, that every good gift and perfect gift comes from you and you alone. Father, may you bless this time. Father, may you guide us and direct us. In your precious, holy, and wonderful name do we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Hudson. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Constitutional officers. How's everyone this morning?
Good.
Number two on the agenda, we have the meeting minutes from September 12th, 2016. I'll entertain a motion.
So move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Approval on the floor.
Second.
Second. Further discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
We have the minutes from the 13th as well to approve.
I'm sorry. With the addition of the 13th, whoever, Walton, you made that motion. If you can add the September 13th regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the September 12th special meeting and the September 13th regular meeting.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Further discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you, Commissioners. Next, we're going to call Quinn Romey up with a special guest. And I think that, Mr. Leary, are you taking this one?
Apparently, Mr. Romey is going to take it.
All right. I thought you might be adding to it maybe a little bit. Come on, shyness. Good morning. How are you, Chief Patterson?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Leary.
Well, I'm going to go to the podium. Let me, if I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I thought Mr. Romey, since you invited him up, had something special he was going to say. But Mr. Mike Patterson, of course, is our current Chief of Fire and EMS. Mr. Patterson, a few weeks ago, announced his retirement, and that retirement will become effective October the 7th, since this is his last opportunity to come before the Board in its formal session. We asked Mr. Patterson to come so that the Board might recognize him and congratulate him for his many years of service with the county. Mr. Patterson started with the county in 1992 and has worked his way up through the hierarchy of the offices within the Division of EMS and has served as the Fire and EMS Manager since 2001. He's rendered 24 years of faithful service to Putnam County and to its citizens, and during that time, he has ensured that the EMTs and the paramedics under his direction have become the well-trained and deliver the finest service to the medical service to the citizens of the county, of any county in the state of Florida. So we want to thank you for that, Mr. Patterson, and you have touched the lives of many people in this county, and we appreciate your service.
Chief Patterson, or Michael, as I've grown to call you. I've always enjoyed a lot of your stories. Mike goes all the way back pre-ambulance days. He actually would go around the county in the station wagons from the funeral homes. And he said, "You talk about technology explosion." I've enjoyed those stories over the years, and I'd like to read this plaque. "For over 24 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County. Very simply said, but the truth." Thank you, Mike Patterson. I'm going to leave. Well, I'll put this back in for you, and I know you have something you wanted to share with us. And again, I can't tell you all the great things you've done, from you and Quinn creating a position for two of you to fill. I thought that was very innovative when we built the new EOC out here. Instead of going out and hiring one person, we had two that did the job very well, and we created a position for two with, they took a lower salary, and I thought that was very commendable for the taxpayers of this county. You guys have been real team players, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I may say something real quick. My best friend, Mike, we're going to miss you. You've truly been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you, and like Commissioner Lible said, you know, we couldn't have done it without you. Your tutelage, I don't know if many people realize, under Mike's tutelage, EMS has had exemplary ratings from the state over the last many, many ratings. With him and his folks, you know, he certainly has led us into the 21st century in EMS. Thank you.
Thank you. Just begging the Board's pardon, and I spoke to Commissioner Lible. You know, I couldn't do this job without all of your support, Mr. Leary's support, and the people that we work with. And we're late in the year, but I would like to present, at award myself, to Lieutenant Lauren Worth as the Outstanding Paramedic for 2015. And if she'll come up here very quickly, and thank you for your. And it has been an honor in total to serve the citizens of Putnam County between the Palaka Fire Department and EMS was there and here for 33 years. It's been an honor. I've worked with all of you very closely, and I thank you for allowing me to do that. It's been a privilege, and thank you, Mr. Leary, very much. Thank you so much.
If I might, just one other thing. October the 6th, we're going to have a reception for Mike at the EOC during the day, so just look for the flyers and all that, and please, everybody come out.
Mr. Chairman, while part of the teammates are here, can you get a group picture, maybe bring them all up front?
That would be great.
With the chief, with both chiefs.
And while we're doing that, Commissioner Harris has some words she'd like to share with us.
Thank you. Mike Patterson, you have been very special to us for a long time, and I just want to share one particular memory.
Oh, I bet I know what it is.
Well, we were bringing some paid professionals on board, and there was a lot of misunderstanding and misconception, and I needed to go to Georgetown, to the Fire Department, and explain that. And it was really difficult, and you said that you would go with me. And it was, at the beginning, not really good, and Mike stood up there, and they said, "Well, you know what? If Mike Patterson is for this, we'd like him and trust him, then we're going to go forward with it." And I will never forget that, and I really appreciated
Yes, ma'am.
... your professionalism and the reputation you had already established with the men. Thank you.
Another good story.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one short, brief story about Mr. Patterson. Mike, since my short time of working with him, known him a long time, but a short time working with him, he has had the can-do attitude about anything I've ever asked him. He's never gave me, "We can't do that. There's no way, no how." It's always been, "Let me think about that. Let me see how I can work that." And we had an issue down in the forest that had some people extremely remote, and just our EMS was so far out, and we were second on, behind Marion County. If they had a call, we would be behind them, so we had to do something about services for those folks. And Mike, through his connections, and that's what this whole business is, is connections and relationships with UF Shands, he had got Lifelight to do a fly-in, and we set up a landing zone over there in the forest for those folks that agreed that they were responsible for that bill if they called on it, because they felt like they wanted that kind of service. But through his connections, made that happen. Lifelight landed out there in the forest, and those people are ecstatic about the coverage that they now receive for medical services, and Mike Patterson is solely responsible for making that happen.
Let's do this. We've got a little system going, guys. Turn the chairs around. Let's get those all uniform looking. Some of you guys can come up here on the upper level.
Well, I was, I guess.
Chief Patterson, Chief Romey, you come up here with us.
Let's put them right in the middle.
Paul, make a little spot right there.
I think I can get right in.
Why they put you in the middle?
You're okay.
Yeah, you can talk, can't you? Yeah, you can talk.
I got the three.
You can't talk during a photo?
I didn't even know that was in the paper till.
Mr. Chairman, I was out on the floor when the comments were being made, but I would be remiss not to mention my relationship with Chief Patterson goes back to the Palaka Fire Department days when I had opportunity to stay low and crawl on the floor of the homes that were on fire. And I appreciate the professional relationship that we have enjoyed over all of the years, and there are many stories that can't be shared, but they are certainly caught on video somewhere in history there. But thank you so much for the leadership, the joint leadership, and may God be with you during your season of retirement. I'm sure you'll be consulting somewhere.
No doubt about it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comment. I have two blue cards, but anybody from the public wishing to comment is welcome to do so after we have these two speakers. We're going to start off with Elizabeth Van Rensburg from the Putnam County Historical Society. Good morning.
Good morning, Elizabeth Van Rensburg, 310 North Third Street. Last weekend, Friday and Saturday, the Putnam County Historical Society held its sixth annual Occupation of Palaka Civil War Living History event, and it was absolutely fantastic. We had close to record numbers. Probably the most exciting part of it were the amount of 4th and 5th graders that came to us. We had nearly 500 Putnam County School System students through our event this year.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Well, and I'm here to thank you all for supporting us each year, and specifically to thank Commissioner Pelisir, who was our Sergeant at Arms this year. He came out and he opened the event for us, so to speak. He went around and he personally thanked every single volunteer and reenactor that we had, and some of our reenactors this year came to us from as far away as Tampa, Florida. So it was a lot of effort, and they really enjoyed meeting the Commissioner. And as a bonus, we allowed him to fire our cannon. So what I brought this morning is a time-release photograph of Commissioner Pelisir firing the cannon, and this is our Civil War cannon, and it makes a huge bang. It may look like he's running away, but actually, that's how he's supposed to do it.
Highly trained for this mission.
He really was. So anyway, as always, thank you all for what you do.
I got to know, did he really eat blind mosquito soup with the troops?
Yes, he did. But we all did.
Oh, man, your boy.
That weekend, yeah. But anyway, thank you all so much. We truly couldn't give back to the community as we do without your support and encouragement.
Thank you for it. She didn't tell the whole story. Before I got to fire it, we didn't know that it was, I thought it was just a one-time thing, and we were over getting ready to do the pledge, and nobody knew it was coming, and we all thought we'd been shot. I'm telling you, everybody just was melted, because it is very loud. And if you're prepared for it, it's loud, but it's not that loud. But if you're not, you don't see it coming, you'll think they hit you, no doubt. But it was a lot of fun, great honor, and a great thrill, and I will treasure this very much. Thank you. Next, we have Fay Sparkman. Good morning.
Just to start the morning off real good, we now have four that want to be in the Huggers Club. Carl Flag got his 75 percent meter this morning. Larry Harvey's on board, and Quinn Romey started. So the hugs are starting to go out throughout the county, but Tim Smith is still number one.
All right, there you go. Thank you.
And the other thank you I want to give is to Tim Smith and Larry Harvey. Last Monday was my husband's 85th birthday, and they actually came out to the house. So when he got to the VA Thursday, he told everybody, "The clerk at court and the county commissioner came for my birthday, and they're all going, 'Who was that?'" A lot of them knew who both of you were, but thank you. My other questions are Twin Lakes and Flamingo Boulevard. I do have an email at home that they were supposed to come out and do something with that. Nobody's come back out, and that's Florida emulsions. So I do know, I guess they're trying to work on it, but if you paid your bill, please don't. The other thing I have is I've been asked quite a few questions. People want to know, and we have a close friend who can't pay her taxes on her property. So she wants to know how long she has to pay them before it goes on the courthouse steps, and what happens if somebody does do something. She wants to know how long she has to pay it.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Can I answer that? Thank you.
Sounds like the question for you. The first step in this is that a tax certificate is sold in May by the tax collector, and then that certificate, if it's not redeemed within two years, the holder of that certificate can then apply for a tax deed sale to happen. Then that gets transferred over to the court side, because then that really is a, it's a court event, because it's losing property. And that's when it comes to my office, and then what we do is we start a process whereby we notify the current owner that a sale has been requested and list the date that the sale will happen. That generally takes from four to six months to work that process along for the proper advertising of that sale event. And then, once the day comes, the tax deed sale begins at 10:00, and if that property has not been redeemed, or the taxes have not been paid by that point, we hold an auction, and that auction is where the price is bid up. And then the high bidder is awarded the property, and then as soon as they come and complete their transaction, a tax deed is issued to the new owner. So that's the drop-dead point. Anytime up to that point, the current owner or the person that owes the taxes has the right to pay those taxes. But after that point, if it's sold and the tax deed is issued, then the current owner no longer has any rights to that property. So that's the line you don't want to get across.
So in other words, she has two years to get it all straightened out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But she wants to monitor that with the tax collector, because there could be prior years where taxes weren't paid, and that certificate could have already met its two years. So you want to make sure that hasn't happened, because then that two-year window is already passed, and the current, or the owner of that certificate at that time, could apply for a tax deed. Now, it still takes that four to six months to work through our process, but she'd have plenty of notice that that sale was coming.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, we appreciate that. Public comment. Anybody else from the public wishing to comment? Now is your time.
Good morning, John Spells, 106 Citrus Lane. I would like to know when are East Palaka going to get some decent mowing? I know y'all been going around there with the boom mower, mowing just the shoulders of the ditch, but it really pitter for to go down Putnam Boulevard, and the grass is so high, the citizens that stay on the other side actually take their personal mowers and more paths just to get to the bike trail. Why would you put that kind of money into a bike trail and effort into doing all the things you've done and can't even maintain what you actually got? So I would like to know, when are we going to get some decent mowing? Not no beating down with a boom mower, just going in certain spots and skipping. I'm talking about a uniform, nice, neat cut, and use weed eaters. I noticed on Turner Road, they was back there last Friday, weed eating around a bridge, but then when you get in front of the citizens' house, then all you do is just get some bushes beat down, they leave a strip right along the road. Why even waste the fuel if you're not going to do the job right?
Okay, I'm sure they're taking notes right now, and your wish will be looked at in the future, and they will do that, Mr. Spells. Anything else this morning?
What I'm saying is, when are they going to actually really do some mowing? Because they only run the road department area or whatever the county on. You go there, you mow around where the water system thing's at, and weed eating everything, but then everybody else's place look crappy all down the road.
If you'll get with Mr. Tompkins after the meeting, he'll be able to give you that schedule in East Palaka when the mowers are coming around. We don't have it with us here.
Mr. Harvey wanted to say something.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Mr. Tompkins today at the transportation meeting, correct? You're going to give all the Commissioners the schedule of mowing, what's going on
There we go.
in the county. So at 2:00 today, you'll have that schedule if you come to that meeting here at the County Commission Office, okay?
All right.
And we'll all have it, so we'll all know what's going on.
Okay, it needs to be a little more quality to the work that's being done around here, because really, it looks so sloppy and tacky. Because I don't know whether they even made it back out to Barden, but they went out there and cut the shoulders off the road, and they plowed that dirt over, and then the last I was out there, they hadn't even went back and completed. When that grass grow over it, then you got them guys trying to mow over dirt piles along the road. They'd have done it right the first time by scooping it up, loading it and removing it, they wouldn't have had to go back. But every time I come here and say something, I guess I'm just insignificant, but when you look at it in the long run, it'd be the exact same thing. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Public comment this morning. Seeing nobody from the public, we will turn to our consent agenda. Commissioners, are there anything wishing to pull this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about E, G, and M, please.
We've got E, G, and M. Commissioners? Just take a moment, pull those out of our packet.
Mr. Chairman, only for the benefit of the public, item K, for public works, just to drill down on how that's, the efficiency in that department is going to be enhanced.
Okay. We can do that. Any other items wishing to pull this morning? I have none. Oh, here we go. Okay, Mr. Harvey, you started off with E. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Dillon's here in the audience, and if she could come forward. I think this is just a great opportunity for us to explain to the public that we are working with our local community governments, if you will, and looking at what they've done. And in this item, this is a HVAC system, and we're actually using the bids from the school board that they feel like is a very good price. So, Ms. Dillon, I thank you for that, and I'll give the floor to you, if you will, and explain to the public how good this is for us.
Melissa, that microphone is awfully high. You might want to adjust. Yes.
It might be better if she comes here, because this camera is showing here and also tagging.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
Come back to the center.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is a great opportunity to partner with our sister governments. They have taken the opportunity to solicit for HVAC services for large commercial tonnage systems and chiller systems, and it provides us the opportunity to be as efficient as possible and to utilize this contract and to save the county some money.
Great. My investigation into this item, Melissa, was the, this is just for the chillers, which is quite different from your normal air-condition units. And locally, our vendors just didn't have the tools or maybe the knowledge, I'm not sure, but there was no one interested in working on these big chiller units.
Excellent point. This item just reflects the large tonnage units and the chiller system units. We have many, many, many more HVAC units throughout the county that we utilize our local vendors in getting quotes whenever we have issues on that. Our local vendors have not been interested in working on these larger systems.
Ms. Dillon, there's some puzzled looks in the audience. A chiller, basically, explain what that is. Water, it's not Freon, it's water-based.
Exactly.
Somebody else could explain. Do you want to bring Mr. Shepherd up?
Maybe.
Mr. Shepherd, you want to come up and explain?
I converse with Mr. Shepherd pretty in-depth on this subject.
I would say.
He assured me that if it were possible locally to do it, we'd be doing it. So, Mr. Shepherd, floor is yours.
These are basically just our big systems, courthouse, tag office, and one at the EOC. And like Larry said, it's got to do with the water that runs through it. We chill the water, and it goes to all the separate units, and that's how that one works, you know?
I think that there's one at the courthouse.
Yes.
I thought so.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Okay, G?
Yes, sir.
Floor is yours.
This is, this is kind of interesting. This is a piece of property in Commissioner Pelisir's district, actually. Kind of landlocked, isn't it? Attorney at?
It is, it is surrounded by property owned by the applicant, Plum Creek. It sits right in the middle of that property. They made application for this property to be deeded back. It had come to the county as a reservation in deeds dating back to 1916.
Hundred years ago.
Yeah, for county, for a highway, if there ever was going to be one. Of course, there was, there was nothing, no highway built there. The county didn't pay any consideration for it, so they have applied for transfer of that property back. And we do have a representative of the applicant here that can give you some further information, historical information on that.
Hi, good morning. I'm Angela Fiorentino on behalf of the current property owner, Plum Creek Timberlands LP.
Angela, will we get your address for the record also?
I'm not sure if there's a physical address associated with the property. I can give you the parcel ID.
Be fine.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We made an application pursuant to Section 255.22 of the Florida statutes, which says essentially, if the property is granted to the municipality without any consideration and it's not used for the stated purpose for at least 60 months, then the current owner of the property can apply to have the property deeded back. And so that's what we're here today seeking.
It was clear to me. Commissioner Harvey, you pulled this subject. You have concerns?
It's fine. My two points were, number one, something that was done 100 years ago. It's pretty interesting to me. And number two, giving that road to the county as a road, or the property to, as a road, and then we never used it. It's in the middle of nowhere, and I don't want the public to ever think that we're trying to get rid of something that's beneficial. In this case, it's in the middle of nowhere.
Right.
And I'm glad this is getting cleaned up, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this morning. Okay, item M. Mr. Harvey, again?
I think Mr. Flag wanted item K before that.
You wanted this table?
No, sir. I just wanted the general public to know this proactive leadership we have, just to discuss the six...
just to discuss the 6th graders.
Miss Kay, I got you.
Good morning, Press Tompkins, Public Works Director. Yesterday, we were able to renegotiate our lease. Our present lease for the motor graders is up this December. There's about a 14 to 16-week lead time to order these machines. That's why we had to get in front of you now. But we were able to renegotiate with Ring Corporation to lease 6th graders for the next coming five years to keep our motor grading system going, keep our dirt roads in the shape they need to be in. So this was a good job. One of everybody's part getting this negotiated and we appreciate your consideration on it.
Yes. Any questions for Mr. Tompkins?
No questions at all. The main thing I wanted to make mention of is, again, the proactive director and his staff, how they're staying on top of it because to have these leased new, the new equipment, certainly you're not paying for maintenance on these. And so the money is being spent on having the most efficient equipment and that also is a morale booster for the individuals who operate these graders because, you know, we still have our share of dirt roads. And I just wanted to express our appreciation again for the leadership that's there and how you're keeping us on the front edge and we're not spending money on maintenance. We're keeping the inventory and the fleet up.
That's correct.
Nancy and I were here when we went to this system, this lease system, and the downtime on the graders and just the technology, you know, they're computer-guided and operated. Still have an operator, a driver in them, but the blade, there's so much sophistication in the equipment now. It's night and day from what we owned and what we lease.
And that's true. The new graders that we're getting have the cross-slope indicators built into them so that the graders now can get the correct cross-slope on the roads with the computer in the, in the machine now. So they're getting a little bit more sophisticated. But you're right, we got the maintenance agreements with these machines. We've had very little downtime with them and when we do need equipment or work on it, Ring Power is there within the day or next day working on them. So I think it's a good deal for everybody, for the county, to continue this lease on the equipment.
Absolutely. Of course, our goal is to put those graders out of business.
I'm gonna do my best to put them out of business.
I was just about to make mention of that. Thank you, Press.
Hopefully, five years from now, I won't be in front of you asking for more motor graders.
That'd be nice.
Thank you.
We thank you, sir. Okay, anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item M, adoption of a fee schedule for the resolution for fiscal year 2016-17. I would like to know, I came in here and spoke with Mr. Hammonds, but he referred me to Stacy. Now, you were gone and you had a family emergency and understand that. Could you tell me the fee schedules that went up from last year? Do we have those comparatives there from last year to this year?
I don't have last year's, no.
Do you have a particular?
I can go through them one by one and tell you that, A, I provided what was provided to me by Mr. Hammonds.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Hammonds probably should have gone over this in detail with Mr. Harvey because most of the fee changes embodied in the fee schedule are connected to the services offered by planning and development and building permit fees. If you'll recall, at a workshop a couple of months ago, Mr. Hammonds approached the board and advised you that our fees generally were about 15% lower than the fees in the region and you instructed him to adjust the fees upward so that they would be comparable to the fees being charged in the region. And that is what he conveyed to Ms. Papel so that she could prepare the fees and charges schedule consistent with your instructions. So it seems to me that Mr. Hammonds could have gone over that with Mr. Harvey because most of, most of the changes embodied in this fee schedule are related to planning and development services.
And we had agreement in that workshop, I remember. Well, and it seems the fee schedule went far back with unchanged pre-recession, if I think the discussion went.
2007, yeah. I'll get back with Mr. Hammonds.
And of course, cost of living and many things, I remember bits and pieces of that conversation, but is there anything particular?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'll get back with Mr. Hammonds later on today.
Okay, that sounds good. I got a question for Mr. Leary, though. Is that a Florida state tag you got on? I mean, a tie?
No, no, sir. It is not. Just a coincidence.
Mr. Leary is a big North Carolina fan and that sure resembles Florida state colors if I've ever seen it. I had to throw that one at you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Please give me a motion.
So move.
All right.
Consent agenda be approved and adopted as presented.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Okay, Commissioners, we come to number six on the agenda, appointments. Are there any appointments in the agenda you're wishing to make at this time? I have nothing. We're all good. All right, moving on. County Administrator Rick Leary.
I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Attorney Mr. Stacy Manning.
I have nothing further.
All right, sir. Clerk of Court, Mr. Tim Smith?
No items today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, sir. Commissioner comments? Anything? Not a thing? Well, I got an announcement, kind of a semi-announcement, but it's major. I think Mr. Smith celebrated a milestone in his life yesterday and of course, with his life partner, Ms. Darlene, you guys celebrated 41?
Forty-one years of...
Congratulations, Tim.
It should be applauded. Thank you. And we really celebrated in style last night. We went to a political forum.
Boy, if she's not used to it by now, she's never gonna be used to it. She truly loves you.
But I will tell you, after that, it was about 9:30, we stopped by McDonald's and got two cheeseburgers and went home. So I came out really well.
It was cheap night.
We're very sincere in congratulating you. Being married to a politician is not an easy task.
Well, she's a dear person. I love her very much and my best friend. Thank you.
Good deal.
Good deal.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? If you ever get the chance, go do, pull the trigger. It's too much fun. Lot of fun, huh? I mean... We are going to recess to 5:05, which at that time, we will have a public hearing on the 1516 budget and 1617 resolution adopting our final levy of ad valorem taxes and also a resolution adopting the final budget and also our five-year capital improvement plan at 5:05. So we will see you then. Thank you.
Also, we, yes, we do have Transportation Committee at 2:00. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.